Thursday, October 24, 2019. At the Lakeville Police Station, 323 Douglas Street, Lake Olmaz. And the first on our agenda is to meet with Mr. Jamie Bissonette of Zenith Consulting Engineers regarding a site plan review for five hard issues. Mr. Bissonette, do you have something for us?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Is this a new plan?
This is.
Updated?
May be just created.
This is one approved by Conservation.
So it's slightly different than we may have seen in the last meeting?
Yes, and I can go into those changes.
To make a motion to accept this plan as our new plan of record?
Okay.
Second?
Let's see what he has to say, then maybe we'll accept it as a complete plan.
I'd like to see it.
Absolutely. As the board had asked, we spoke with the fire chief.
Yes.
I believe you received the letter.
Yep.
The fire chief asked that we add a hydrant, so that's going to add it to the plan. And he also would like a connection to the front of the building, which has also been called out.
A fire power connection. Good man.
Yep. The other change was Conservation in their review, they wanted to make sure that we were protecting the cold water fishery adequately. So what we did was we added, we upgraded our storm septic units and added them in a couple of other places as an additional BMP. Those were our changes.
That was it?
That's it.
And everything's good with the crossing, the driveway?
Yeah, so we're not impacting any wetlands here, but the culvert is being replaced, so it'll be structurally sound.
So that's what the fire chief is in his letter?
Yes. That's correct.
You wrote it in a strange way.
Oh, okay.
If you read it.
I haven't actually written it, I've just told it, it went out.
Are you having a structural engineer design your culvert or?
It's going to be a pipe going through a double-ended headwall, so there'll be no need.
So it's just a pipe?
Yep, just a pipe.
Excellent. And that's outlined on the plan?
Yes, it is. Yep.
There was a question, did you look at the letter from Conservation? There was a letter from Conservation that expressed some concern about sensitivity of the surrounding wetlands and the importance to the ecosystem for the whole of community and it being a priority habitat.
True.
They did indicate that they wanted to make sure that the area was kept shaded and runoff was cool and unpolluted.
Yeah, and I believe that letter came out prior to the meeting on Tuesday. We were able to convince them that we met those standards and we're doing that.
How did you convince them? What did you guys do?
Well, it was additional BMPs. We've been working for about a year with the Endangered Species People and Natural Heritage. Right now, we're working with Wildlands Trust on a conservation restriction, which will take up about two-thirds of the property.
Good. Okay.
Go right ahead, Zing.
Just for the record and for the TV, what acreage, what of this particular parcel is going to Wildlands Trust? What?
They actually, we're negotiating that with them now. It's a matter of whether or not they're going to want some of the riverfront area, but they're getting the majority of the chunk in the back. The endangered species people are actually more concerned with the woodland than they were the river area, which was a little bit of a surprise to us.
Well, it's a box turtle they're concerned with.
It is, it's the eastern box turtle.
Yeah.
But just roughly, I don't mean--
The parcel, somewhere around 20 acres.
Okay. 20 acres are being set aside for Conservation.
Conservation.
That's the number you want to sell.
Yep, right about there.
Yep.
So we have a motion, a second, to accept the plan. Would you raise your hand to vote?
Can I add a couple? Please.
Go right ahead.
There's still a curb cut information pending.
Yeah.
We won't have anything to do with that because that's a state decision.
Yep.
But if it goes wrong, we want to hear about it.
If it what?
If it goes wrong, if it doesn't work out, if it doesn't--
No, if it's a change to the plan, they'll have to bring it back to us.
Right. That's what I'd like to make clear.
Well, we all know that. I know that.
We have a lot more people here tonight.
Well, to be clear, I don't think we're supposed to discuss this plan until we accept it into record for this meeting. I think that's the point.
No, you can.
Sure.
Well, we have--
He handed it to us. I'm not saying we're voting on approval, we're just saying we are reviewing that plan instead of the one we saw last meeting. That's all.
Okay, you made a motion.
I made a motion to accept this plan as our plan of record.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, this is the plan that we're talking about now.
That's it?
Okay.
Thank you.
So if we do need, if we do get anything from the state, Mass DOT, about the curb cut, then--
Or any other change, right?
Or any other change.
Would be any other change.
Or from Conservation, or from zoning, or from anybody else, or from the selectmen, then we should probably discuss it then. Don't you think?
I agree, not from the selectmen.
Anybody. Okay, so--
And--
Now, we've looked at this plan--
There's another thing I'd like to add on. What the Conservation Commission added as one of their conditions at their meeting two days ago was they shall prepare a list of significant milestones for review and approval before, and that, in this case, because we had a Form A abutting it and a Form C will be abutting it, I'd like to also get a copy of that when it's available. I don't want a special copy, but just whatever goes to Conservation, I'd like to see come to planning also.
They wanted to be notified when the silksaw run out, they wanted to be notified when we start the culvert.
Yeah, not that much, but it just, when you get close to the Form Cs, it would be good if we knew because--
Yeah, Bob was concerned that once work starts, everybody starts calling him, and if he doesn't know what we're doing, it makes his life. So that's what we're going to do. We're just going to outline, we're starting the silksaw, we're going out there with the, you know, doing the culvert, that's why people start calling town hall, they don't know they're working on the culvert, we know about it, it's all good.
Yeah. Makes sense.
So you want to be notified?
Yeah, whatever they got. Yeah, didn't want to make anything special, but--
Sure. Sounds good to me.
I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the conditions that they added was to be allowed on the site during, throughout, isn't that standard for an order of conditions?
That's correct.
So they're automatically grandfathered to come on the site?
They're allowed--
As long as that order of conditions is in place?
Yes.
As are we.
Well, the order of conditions is the Wetlands Protection Act, so, I mean, I guess--
Ours is under a different--
I'm sure Bob's not going to throw you out if you come and look at something, but--
And we've seen this several times.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the site plan as dated--
Do we have a second?
And as conditioned.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Public discussion? I have no further discussion.
I don't think, I think people are supposed to speak out. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh.
Yes.
Kathy, how you doing? The feet. They're good.
I can go get that now. We're in the back.
You want a copy of this stuff somewhere else?
It goes to coffee. You have coffee?
Accurate assumption that that's the next hearing? If so, I'm going to recuse myself and start the others.
Number two on the agenda is to meet with Zenith Consulting Engineers regarding a site plan review for 296 Pettington, is that it?
Yeah, I'm going to recuse myself in this hearing.
Okay.
I've been watching that number on the top corner.
Gotcha.
Which, yeah, which agenda I got.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jamie Bissonette from Zenith Consulting Engineers. Tonight, we have a site plan for the old Lakeville Police Station in front of you. You'll see in the plan set, we have the existing emissions plan, the existing site, building, there's some trailers when we surveyed, and pretty much the entire property is currently taped. Septic system on site, well that actually splits right on the property line, it's shared with the abutting property here.
The well, yeah.
The well is, that's correct. And as you can see, the existing sign, and the sign is actually in the highway layout.
Yep.
So all of that is going to have to be modified. So our proposed layout is to actually raise the existing structures on site, build a new building 35 feet back from the property line, which is much further than it presently is now, remove the existing sign and construct a new sign that meets the zoning requirements, construct a walkway in the front portion of our site with the front of our building around our site, utilize, we'll first close off this area with the curb cut down as Mass DOT will want, install a Mass DOT compliant entrance with associated parking, meeting ADA requirements for parking, small fenced-in area towards the back with a dumpster location, and some, plenty of green space for plowing and increase in green space from what's there now. As far as drainage goes, right now, the existing drainage pretty much pitches right through the back, goes offsite, and there's a little bit in the front that gets into the roadway. What we're going to be doing is we're going to be collecting the water via a trench drain in the front and a catch basin with a first defense treatment unit in the back, and then we're going to be infiltrating under the pavement in the back towards that fenced-in storage area that we talked about. Overall, the site's pretty flat, so the grades are very, very insignificant. We're running at 2% pitches, which is very comfortable, very nice. We're showing on this a proposed bleaching for the septic system in this vicinity over here. And then, we have our standard erosion and sediment control plan to protect abutting properties from any erosion during construction, concrete washout area, construction apron in the road while the asphalt's being modified, not that we expect the women to de-water the basin, but if we do need one, area four on site. Construction details, including signs, fencing, trash, everything else, handicap access ramps. And then, last but not least, the lighting plan. As you can see, not if you don't want to see, we're not sending much light except for in the front of our entrance right in here and on our site, we're not really going to be sending any light off of our site either. We do have some wall pack units, and we have a couple of pole units that are in the parking lot, so that the entire parking area is safe and comfortable to walk around, but not too bright or offensive. And I, our readers will ask it, it's the dark sky by law. The details for this, showing what it should look like.
Uh-huh.
I like this, I thought this was pretty fancy.
I like that.
Yeah. So the company that put this together did a fantastic job. That gives us a better picture of what's actually happening. And then, a little bit further back, I believe, they talk about the heights, the quantities of each picture, what height, whether they're wall packs, whether they're pole style. And then, last but not least, the architectural plans, front elevations, layouts. Right now, the proposal is to have the main entrance on the backside, that's the parking area. And it's a little bit different than, so this would be the view from the street, which is beautiful, you've got a nice gable end, you've got nice roof lines, and it's just, it's a nice looking building. On this, you've got a side view, which is fine, and then let me show you the store side entrance, or the shop side entrance. Is this, it's got a farm foot entry, so it's a very nice looking building. I don't know if there's much more I can add, it's, you know, it's about an acre site, and we're taking a lot of pavement off of it, making it much more compliant to zone, store water, putting a nice new building.
So we do have a well on this property, there isn't public water for this property?
There is not.
I love the design, I think it looks really, looks nice for the character of our community, it'll be a nice addition to our downtown. You know, Jamie, in other places, when you have, and I forgive me because I'm not that knowledgeable about runoff and all that sort of stuff, but this parking lot is probably going to have a higher usage than what it's had previously. Do you have runoff treatment, is that necessary? I know we don't have wetlands nearby, so--
Yeah, we do, we have a trench drain, but we also have what's called the first defense unit, which is a BMP, best in the treatment practice treatment unit, and that provides an extremely high level of treatment prior to infiltration. So it's a very, very, very nice unit to have in place. It's more than your standard catch basin, it's actually a technology that separates out oils and sands and--
Excellent. Yep, thank you.
So for ZBA, you'll be going to them--
Correct.
--after us, and then you'll be asking them for the side setback, side setback, and lot coverage, impervious coverage?
And front setback.
And?
35 feet.
And any front setback?
35 feet.
Yes, sir.
So they'll--
This is a big improvement.
Yeah, of course it is, but they're still, they have plenty of decisions that they have to write off.
Oh, absolutely. Yep, that's correct.
The only one you could probably do anything about would be the lot coverage.
Yeah.
And why would you? Yeah.
I think they're dealing with less, less non-conforming.
Yeah.
No, I'm just, just noticing that.
Jamie, on the front of the plans, you showed that there's a sidewalk, we don't have a sidewalk on that street.
And this sidewalk's on our, on our site, so people can walk from our site across to the Sedell's parking lot if needed.
Okay.
Sedell's?
Well, former Sedell's, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
Will you discontinue the southbound side of the sidewalk then? Or do you need it?
We can, we can only do the work on our, on our lot, in here, so to go from property line to property line?
Right, oh, I thought I saw you had concrete sidewalk on both sides of the entry.
We do.
There is.
Yep, uptight each property line on both sides.
Do you need it on the south side?
We don't have to have it, no.
I mean, it just, it's going to go to nothing, correct?
Correct, yeah, there is, there is a business over here presently.
Yep.
I guess it's something that--
I'd like to see sidewalks the whole way, but if it just ends--
Yep.
One might think that's a good start.
Well, it's--
Yeah, no, that's fine, yeah.
I like the idea of having it only on one side, though, that kind of alleviates that problem where it makes sense where there already is an existing building. I don't know, maybe that wouldn't be right for the, for the materials, you'd have to redo both sides if you never got a home on the other side, you know?
There is a building here, remember, it's--
It's sheet metal.
The back side.
Yeah.
Oh, the sheet metal, okay.
Sheet metal building to the side, yep. So this is their, this is their entrance right here, that would bring up pretty much right to the entrance.
And you're adding a lot more lawn in the front?
Oh, tremendous amount, oh, yes. We are going from 92.3% impervious to 62.5. So there's a lot of green space, there's going to be lawn surrounding the building, in the back, in the corners, lakescape islands, and on the side.
Okay, if the board doesn't mind, I'd like to open a second discussion for anybody else who'd like to discuss it. Does anyone have any comments on this parcel? Just not?
One, one minor one. And it's-- In case there's a monitoring well that has to be installed during the length of the job, I'd like it marked on a plan and that we are notified.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
It's just, it's just a routine thing. No reason to expect that there would be one, but if there is one, I want to notice.
You want a record of where it would be?
Monitoring well?
If there's a monitoring well installed.
Okay. Do you have any problem with that one?
If one's required, I guess I don't have a problem.
Of course you wouldn't do one for, if it wasn't--
Yeah, if it wasn't required, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have any problem with that.
I think--
Yes.
I think the building looks really nice.
Yes.
With the game roads and how it presents it, trying to keep a rural character as opposed to live the doll stuff.
Yes.
Just a comment.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Do we have any other discussion?
No.
I think that the drainage and the issues that we have there are so minor, I don't believe that we should send this to our consulting engineer. If Conservation wants to do that, then maybe we can just give them a side.
There's no review because we're not within--
Right.
200 feet of a repairing zone or 100 feet of a wetland.
Okay. So does anyone have a motion they'd like to make on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second, is there any further discussion? The board, no? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Fine.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's going to take twenty minutes, but at least this channel's got a little time. It's going to take a long time to down the farm, insert the railgun, police station, you know, library--
So you think how much longer that situation--
Ancient five.
What's that?
How much longer is that situation?
I don't think he wants as much of any because he's always on vacation.
He'll bother. We'll sign him later.
Can one of each sex?
Do you want to design one for that?
Hey, one of these, I'll scan it and tell you how many copies.
Can we do it last, or you, you want it right now? Oh, we'll do it last.
Okay, absolutely.
Can we do that?
So you only want one copy yet?
One of each, and I'll scan it and tell you how many copies, and I'll try and do a check from Bob. So you just take checks for roadblocks from Bob's.
Thanks, Shane. Number three on the agenda is to distribute tentative meeting dates for 2020.
Right, could I, could I make a motion that we just move that to the end? Would anyone have a problem with that?
I thought that you could take it and look it over--
Oh, yeah.
Individually and see if there was any that there would be a conflict or--
So just--
It would inform.
Yep.
Okay.
So we continue this discussion till our next meeting, everybody have a chance to check the calendar?
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
Second.
Seconded the continuance.
Is it seconded?
Zing seconded the continuance. My motion--
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, four is to update, an update regarding share of our estates. Have we, do we have--
We have a little bit of an update, if we can.
Okay.
Jamie Bissonette from Zenith Consulting Engineers.
Yeah.
So I spoke with Nick Laney from HML and Associates today, and Kathy. Nick did get a chance to drive by the site. He made a fantastic point that we have not submitted a roadway as built yet.
That doesn't happen until you go to apply for the--
For the roadway acceptance.
Yeah.
He, he would like one to review before giving comment. The client is okay with having the roadway as built done, in fact, we can have it done in the next two weeks, but the holdup is, is that on the remaining lot, they'd like to get a foundation in before frost. And so, yep, I understand, so they're hoping to be able to post a financial bond of some type, and I just need some guidance on how to move forward with that so they can put in the final foundation.
Sir? I saw the surveyor laying out that foundation, I think it was today. The, right now, we're holding nine lots. By any standards, if, if you just give us $15,000, we have a thousand-foot-long road, plus or minus five feet, if we can just agree that it's 1,000 feet, just give us $15,000, which is $15 a foot for the length of the roadway, and that's where our bylaw says, you can have all the lots, all nine.
Fantastic.
Can I-- That's, that's what our bylaws say. I mean, we can't, we can't make a better deal.
Is that acceptable? Because if that is the case, I, we have the cashier's checks right up the street, I forgot them in my office.
That's a motion.
That's a motion.
So I second the motion to, the motion is to release all the lots when a financial bond for 15,000 is posted by the applicant.
Right, and those will be lots one through seven, nine, and 10 on the plan.
And that's per our bylaw?
That's per our bylaw.
And that includes the one that needs the foundation in?
That's correct.
Because he's, he's done with the road, I mean, he's--
The road is top coated and everything?
Top coated, yeah.
So I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll be back with the money for the bond.
Tonight?
Tonight, about 10 minutes.
Whoa.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we got to do, we got to do a format, we got, we got to do that, there's a notarized thing we have to do. We have to do that tomorrow morning?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Okay, peer review discussion, I think that just went on. Okay, new business, an act to promote housing choices.
So has anybody heard about this before tonight?
Nope.
Over the years, like, this comes up every three years.
Yeah.
From what I understand, it's not getting a ton of traction.
A lot of people don't pay attention to it, I guess, huh?
Well, I think it's the fact that it over, it circumvents the two-thirds vote requirement, I think that's the B.
It changes it to what, 50% plus one?
It's 50%, 50% plus one, yeah. So it changes the dynamics of town meeting, and I think that's what people are resistant to.
That for all zoning changes? That's for all zoning changes?
It has to do with the affordable housing.
Okay.
Right?
But, but this is a, this is still under local control, so we have to vote, the town meeting would have to vote two-thirds in addition to the state voting, I mean, we're still, we're still local control, so--
Which I think is why it's not getting traction.
It's, it's not going to pass many, many towns in southeast Mass. We're just not that sort of people. We're just not that sort of people.
To pass this?
Yeah.
I didn't think so.
No, no. I would argue for hours and hours. I mean, this is just a real bad idea.
Yeah.
We believe in local control in Lakeville.
So I would really like to entertain somebody making a motion that we... Possibly disregard this until they force it on us.
Well, in another organization I belong to, I would say, I move we post this on the bulletin board.
This doesn't really require a motion, does it? Is it just informational for us?
It doesn't require a motion. It's just a piece of information.
So...
But if the public's interested for the television, what we're talking about is an act to promote housing choices. It's Housing Number Three Five Oh Seven, and it's a legislative movement to try to affect the Chapter Forty that has to do with the way that towns regulate affordable housing. Chapter Forty B, it basically means that if a community does not have ten percent of their affordable housing met and/or is not in compliance with their... It's the Housing Initiative Plan, what we call Housing Production Plan, then if a builder can come in and provide a plan to put in enough units to get a Forty B approved, and the community doesn't have any ability to deny that. What the state's proposing is changing the vote from a two-thirds town majority vote to a fifty-one percent majority vote. So it would really change the dynamics of the way that whole process happens. So that's just a point of information to let people know what I'm talking about.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay, so Zink, I would like to have that posted on the bulletin board. So Number Five B is to meet with Stan Tech for informational meeting regarding Fifty Seven Long Point Road. Gentlemen.
I'm John Delius-Culley. Is it okay to stand with this?
Sure, sure.
With me tonight is Kevin Klein from Stan Tech, you know, and William Pizoni, Florida. Eric here over there, my counsel. For those of you who may not be familiar with this project, this is the Island Terrace Site. Island Terrace was originally a single-family home going way back. And then in the fifties, mid-fifties, it became a nursing home, kind of organically. And then it's been a nursing home ever since. And then, just to get... So everybody has a little bit of background. And then the Toll family, a wonderful family, by the way, who I've grown close to and I've tried to help, embarked on bringing the site into compliance, primarily with wastewater and things of that nature, which became a very complicated, very involved, multi-year, multimillion-dollar investment into this property. In order to make that happen, they went to a bank and got a loan. And the loan was an incremental loan, like a typical construction loan. And they had to put in a substantial amount of site work before they could actually expand the nursing home to accommodate the additional beds, which would then give the additional revenue to service that loan. Well, the bank decided, and I don't know all the details, and I don't think it's... It doesn't really matter at this point, but it didn't happen other than the fact that all the wastewater got upgraded, all the water, all the safety, everything that I've done, except the building never got expanded and lost the property. The bank took the property over, and for the last almost a year now, I've been working on the property. And I have site control today. It's kind of a neat story how it happened. I wasn't looking for a project. My background, I've been developing for almost forty years, both residential, commercial, heavy industrial, and I'm into various logistics and so forth. I happen to also own E-Develop, which is up here in Carver. And the Toll's reached out to us because they had a bunch of Christmas displays, and they didn't want us throwing them in a dumpster. And they told us to see if we could repurpose them Christmas. And that's how the conversation started and ended. Initially, it was quite appalling, what all the sequence of events happened. Having done a lot of major developments over the years and still, primarily in Metro West, which is Southborough, Framingham, Marlborough, primarily Marlborough, and Holliston, Milford, you know, all through up there. But being based here now, I looked at it to see what I could do. I tried working over the bank, and it was obvious that it was too far gone. So I worked to take the property over, and I'm also helping out the Toll's at the same time. There's no good relationship between the Toll's and the bank, you know, so they did that. So we started, we came in, and we made a presentation, we workshop, we worked through several hearings with the Board of Appeals, because there was a number of steps. And I'll let Mr. Pizoni speak to the actual legal steps. I don't want to bore you with all the gory details, but we worked very closely with the board. We came in with a plan to do eighty-five condo, knock everything down and provide eighty-five condominiums. The board ultimately approved seventy-four. However, at that point in time, there's a lot of moving parts in the site. I'll get into the plan, but I just want to give you a little bit of the history so you know where we are. So seventy-four got approved by the Board of Appeals, which gave us the use and everything we needed, and all those technicalities that you were mentioning earlier with this prior project that it needs to be met, and what's more non-dentamental than all those legal terms. They were happy with the plan, and there was no... There's only one of butter, that's Deacon Cranberry, and I've met with them. I work with them in Carver, because I live with the Cranberries as well, and they were quite happy with what we're doing. But DEP had a huge role in the site. Now, for those of you that are familiar with the site, I'm sure you all are, it's a small town, and a very well-known family and a piece of property there. And it has a lot of issues, I mean, the sense of where it is, you know, physically with the water and this, the Zone A, you know, Zone One, and every possible constraint is on this site that you can imagine. And DEP really worked hard with the Toll's, but they put almost five million dollars into the ground there to straighten out the wastewater and everything else. So now you have this fabulous wastewater system, you have this fabulous potable water system, you have a cistern for fire alarms, fire sprinklers, you have everything, you have three-phase power, and you don't have a project. So now with this, what we're talking about, DEP was very helpful. However, they wanted to see the site reduced from what was approved. So ultimately, DEP approved, because they have to reapprove because it's a change of use. Yep. And then that triggers another review with DEP, just so you folks, you know, know. So the whole process started over again. We're keeping Kevin quite happy, as you can see, but with all this engineering. But DEP did approve sixty-six units at twenty percent or less. We can't exceed twenty percent, or actually under twenty percent, impervious. So that's it. Just so you know, that's where we are today. So we got those approvals, we have DEP's approval, we've worked through a few issues with Toll and Bedford, and we've got the Board of Appeals. So now what's left is to work through with you folks and the Conservation Commission, who said this would be handled through an RDA, because there's really no filling, dredging, touching the wetlands, it's all work, basically reducing the footprint that's there now. Right. So it's really... It's redevelopment, but it's actually much less. And I enjoyed your comments when the prior project was here, when you mentioned that everything's getting better on the site, you know?
Less noisy.
Right. You're getting more green space, you're getting more... Less pavement, you're getting much more thoughtful landscaping and things like that. What we don't want to see happen in any community is the buildings sit there, fall off, and you know what's gonna happen. It's gonna turn into a real problem for everybody, a public safety nightmare. So everybody's anxious to see it repurposed, and at least that I've met and spoken with. So what I'd like to walk you through a little bit, to show you what we have in mind, and I very thoughtfully designed this. This is gonna be a very, very, very upscale, fifty-five and older condominium project, all one-for-living, parking underneath the buildings, a totally different product, a mix. And in that, and this, when you look at the planning from the state, or they always like to see multiple different choices of housing types, not just all single-family, not necessarily all condos, and not necessarily all mid-rise. They like to see a mix because the population is diverse, and they like to see the housing diverse as well. So with that, let me just walk you through quickly, and then I'm gonna ask Kevin to give you the real... A little bit more detail on the engineering, and then Bill, you could just give him a chime in on the legalities of where we are, what our constraints are. We did... Unfortunately, we couldn't come to you sooner, which I would have loved to do, but we chewed up an awful lot of time at DEP. I mean, they were very helpful, but they don't move quickly. But we are completed, and we do have the sign-offs, and so I just want you to understand that's the reason there was a delay between where we left off, because the DEP was the next big item. So this plan you see here is the existing conditions plan of what's there now. And this plan here is the new plan, which comes down to two buildings. And as you may know, there's three... Is it three singles? Four. There's three singles plus a big garage, right, up there, plus the main house. I think there's three single-family homes.
Three single families.
The existing nursing home, and then there's a garage that was a very elaborate garage there.
And a storage building originally.
All that's being removed, so nothing's being saved. And in its place are two buildings with thirty-three units each on three stories. There is some outdoor parking, a lot of the parking is underneath the buildings.
We're not around trucks, but when you say nothing, you can say except for the wastewater stuff?
Well, right.
The underground infrastructure stuff.
On the surface, I'm talking about structures. I'm sorry, I should have clarified that. What we've done is, is we've been able to basically use ninety-nine percent of the existing infrastructure that so much money was put in, and so much care was put in to protect the water supply and everything else and all the environmental constraints. That's all being protected, in fact, it's being enhanced, because we're controlling runoff, we're doing a number of little things that actually make it better. So from DEP's perspective, and they listed out in their decision, we reduced... We handled the runoff, recharge, we reduced site coverage. We, you know, we've basically taken a plan that's there today, that currently exists, which, by the way, could be repurposed, but I'm not in the nursing home business, I'm not in the alcohol rehabilitation business or anything like that, so that's the place we'd be used to. I want to make sure that... So DEP was very pleased with what we were doing, because everything is less impactful all the way across the board. So what you end up with is two buildings, the same exact driveway access, same exact everything. There's a very little disturbance up here. We also addressed... Is that my small figure that's blocking?
No, sir, it's my eyesight.
I'm an old person. The traffic up there, we did... We had a traffic analysis done, and the traffic was much greater with the prior use because of all the different constant ambulance calls, all the staff that work there, large trucks from Cisco with those type of things going up there. None of that's gonna exist in this new... You have sixty-six people, I'm sure it'll be an occasional call, but typically it'd be nothing... No different than a typical little neighborhood, that would be from a traffic perspective. So less impactful on the traffic as well. And we know the traffic and the roads worked because they worked for the Island Terrace, and we're doing less there, too. So everything's less.
There's...
Yeah, that's the same thing. So then, the first... This is our concept drawing, and what we're looking to do is something that would look very, what we call Down East Designs, with shingles and natural materials on the buildings, stonework, shingle, very attractive, very custom, and very upscale. And I think it would be absolutely beautiful up there, it'd be a real... I think it'd be a great product for Lakeville. Lakeville's so well-located, I never realized how well-located it is until I really studied it. The rail station, the access to Providence, the access to the Cape, the access to Boston, Route Twenty-Four by the train. And it's just gonna be really a great spot, so I thought this would really work well.
Single floor?
Each unit is a single floor, but there's three floors. So it's two bedrooms, every unit... That's right, I should explain that. Every unit is two bedrooms. There's no one-bedroom, there's no three-bedroom, every unit is two-bedroom. It is fifty-five and older, as I mentioned, which, for those of you familiar with it, one spouse needs to be fifty-five or older. They all have magnificent views, and it would be just beautiful up there.
Are there elevators?
Yes. Underground parking, it's very luxury.
So it's single-floor, livable space, access through an elevator, so there's no stairs?
There is stairs, you have to have stairs both. You have to have a stair, a fire.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
A fire stair. But people that live there will never use the stairs.
Right.
I mean, unless they're looking to exercise.
Or if there's fire.
Well, God forbid. But this will be fully sprinkled, and the sprinkle system, as I said, we already have the cistern, that was part of that five-million-dollar upgrade that the Toll's did. That's all there, the public water supply, and so this takes... What this does is, this repurposes all that work that was done brand-new and hardly ever used, takes the old buildings and all the disrepair away, and basically the look of... Even though the project is not abandoned, it looks abandoned, take all that out of there and repurpose it and bring a real high-quality project that will... In development, that will, you know, be one of the tax rolls, be very minimal impact on the community from a school perspective, obviously, and also on public services. Fully sprinkled, there's really very little for the town to do or provide. Everything is privately maintained, the roads and everything else. So with that, that's really it in a nutshell of what we'd like to do. We'd love your support on this, and would like to get this moving along, as there is a little bit of a squeeze because of the bank and all these other requirements that they have, and I'm trying to make sure the Toll's are taken care of. So there's just a number of moving parts that really doesn't... Really is not necessarily in that handbook in front of you, but in reality, these are the things that I'm dealing with. But I tried very thoughtfully to bring a good project and a good development to the town. I could follow through, I've built over twelve hundred houses and condominiums in my career, I've built over three million square feet of commercial buildings. With the communities, and I like to participate, I like to be part of the community. I can answer any questions, or I can... Why don't you give them a little bit more detail where we are without boring them?
I'm trying not to bore you. I'm Kevin Klein from Stan Tech. What we've got here is an existing site that, actually, I've been working on for eighteen years. And it's been incrementally improved over the years. It used to be drainage was leach and catch basins, if you had any. Septic was cesspools. The Toll family, when they were going through the upgrades, did a number of upgrades. They built some new parking, we put in new stormwater, recharged the stormwater, we put in a new wastewater treatment system. It was designed for twelve thousand five hundred forty gallons a day. It includes a moving bed bio-reactive treatment system. But it's been there, it works great.
Can you design that for them?
I designed that for them. We also did water supply improvements. They had an existing well, the whole site. Half the site is in their own Zone One for their well, the entire site's in the Zone A for surface water supply. So you've got restrictions there. We had... The existing nursing home building is here, the well is right here. There was another well over here that is now used for irrigation. There was another well over here that is now used for irrigation. In order to maximize separation distance to the pond, we built a wastewater treatment system down here, but put the leaching up here. Because we put the leaching here, we had to get rid of the second backup well.
The irrigation well, right.
Now it's an irrigation well, it's more than 100 feet away, but it's a backup well.
Yep.
It was, it was the backup well, backup drinking water, now it's just irrigation. In order to do that, we had to design a whole water treatment system. So it comes in, it gets, it gets neutralized, disinfected, goes out to a 35,000 gallon storage tank, and then it gets pumped back in, goes through another round of disinfection, and goes through disinfection, and then gets distributed. While we were doing that, with the nursing home improvements, they built a fire vault, where they've actually got fire protection pumps, so they can sprinkle, they were going to be able to sprinkle the building. That can draw off of the drinking water tank, because it's got 35,000 gallons of water there. So we actually, the drinking water supply tank can be used as the cistern for the fire, fire protection. When we came to the ZBA, we got the approval for 74 units, and immediately, as we're walking out, Dave Johnson from the DEP was there, and he said, "We've got to sit and talk." I said, "Okay." He said, "We've got to talk about how you're going to permit water, wastewater, and site on this site." It's not, you have your water supply, you have it fully, you, you have a non-conforming public water supply. You have to make it as good as possible. And we went through all of the requirements, we met with them a number of times, and outlined, outlined the requirements. We had to reduce impervious to less than 20%, we had to reduce so that we had less than 10,000 gallons per day of flow. We had to move everything as far out of the Zone 1 as possible, protect the Zone A as much as possible. We have to, all of our stormwater from impervious, from parking and roadway, will now be collected, go through hydrodynamic separators, storm sectors, and they'll be recharged. All of the runoff, stormwater from roofs, has to be recharged on-site. You can't just go overground anymore.
Right.
Because we're in the Zone A, so we have to recharge that. We had to reduce the flow to less than 10,000 gallons a day, and move as much out of the Zone 1. So we had a Zone 1 that was here, that had all of the building, included a little bit of our treatment system, but did not include, did not include the leaching. Because we reduced our flow, we were able to slightly reduce the size of the Zone 1.
Right, yeah.
So now we have a Zone 1 radius that does it. The first building is almost entirely in the Zone 1. The existing nursing home building, right now, is in the Zone 1, as are the septic tanks, the grease tanks, all of the old cesspools, that stuff comes out. We'll have the new building in the Zone 1 with underground parking. We'll have runoff, stormwater runoff from the roof outside of the Zone 1, and then stormwater from our roadway, the access roadway, recharge some of it at the, at the entrance, the rest of it will be recharged in the back. We tried to save as much stuff as we could, we're saving three-quarters of the leaching, because it was only built a couple of years ago. We do have to remove a couple sets of chambers and build some new ones, but we need less than what we have out there. We're meeting with, we're going to be doing test kits with the Board of Health a week from Monday for the new leaching, and also, we're going to uncover some of the existing, the part that's going to come out, just to see the condition of it. But it's already treated, and we've got great sand out there. When we did the septic out here, we got 40 feet of sand before we hit water. It's nice stuff up there. Now we'll move it a little bit further away from the pond, and it'll be a little bit smaller. The stormwater for the existing parking lot, our existing parking is going to get smaller, because most of our parking is underground, it's under the buildings. We still need some unit, some parking, in order to meet the zoning by law, but most of it's under. The stormwater from the existing, there's a big parking lot out there that's coming out, the stormwater from that goes into, is recharged right now. Unfortunately, we have to, that happens to be right here, we're going to have to take those chambers out and move them over to here, but we can reuse them. We have to get some more, but we have to, we can reuse what's there and redo, repurpose the existing chambers. The way the stormwater works on this, we basically, right now, it just sheet flows and discharges. We will capture it here, go in here, this part here is actually going to be a little bit of a low point. We'll capture it via a couple of catch basins, hydrodynamic separator, and then recharge.
It's going to be a low point per drainage?
Yeah, per drainage.
Because the elevation is definitely-
Oh, yep, we just made it so that we're going to come up and dip it in so that that's where we can capture it. We don't want it flowing towards the buildings.
Right.
It's easier to flow it towards the middle of the circle. And then, now we can capture it there, and then down here is much lower. So it can all just flow right on down there. There will be trench drains right at the entrances to the garage, that'll flow towards, that'll go also to our leaching, through the separators to the leaching. There's also going to be, and this will be the architect working on this, and we'll get in there, there'll be a drainage system in the garages, just for any dripping, there won't be a lot of it, that's going to get pumped to double-walled industrial waste holding tanks. We've shown two, we're going to take a look at whether we need one or two, they currently have one there right now, and we may be able to reuse, that's used for, that was used for the hair salon, that was actually in the Zone 1, previously was a cesspool. But we'll have two industrial waste holding tanks for that. The treatment system, all of it that's over here, and the lower building, that will all remain. We'll have to redo the piping to get up to the, redo the collection system piping, which right now comes from all the buildings in the Zone 1. It's now going to be sewage collection outside of the Zone 1 with a short pipe into our septic tank and into the treatment system, and then we'll have a new force main coming out of it. Mass DEP made us go through everything, looking at this, they did the water supply, we had designed the water treatment system and the water supply for the Island Terrace Nursing Home five years ago. They made me do a whole new redesign and resubmital for this. Essentially, it was easy. I took a picture of the equipment, said, "That's moving from here to here." I mean, it took more than that, but it's reusing all of the stuff, but moving from one building to another, and then we laid it out in a, it's actually going to be in a better configuration, because we have a new spot in our building, right down here, in the basement of the building, where we can build, build the water treatment system. And, but Mass DEP looked at it as though it was a new source approval. They knew it could not be 100% compliant, but it was the best that could be done on this site. To be 100% compliant, nothing's allowed in the Zone 1, other than water supply requirements. They knew that couldn't happen. You can't get to the site, you can't build on the site. So they looked at it and said, "Okay, this is the best that you can feasibly do on this." And so we submitted it to them, they reviewed it, and we got the permit. That package has also been submitted to the Board of Health. The wastewater treatment system had previously been reviewed by the Board of Health, but it was permitted through the Mass DEP. It was over 10,000 gallons a day, what was done is an IA treatment system. It'll now be less than 10,000 gallons per day, and the permit for the revisions to it is through the Board of Health. And that was DEP wanted it, keep it under 10, go back to the Board of Health, get the permits through them.
Nice.
We are working with the architects, we're trying to move these plans along, but we wanted to have a chance to at least get you up to speed on where we're at, because it took a little bit of time to get started.
The biggest delay is, really, was DEP. I mean, there was not an adversarial delay, it was just a process delay. They were very excited that we were willing to continue the improvements, and from their perspective, thank you, this, 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 the site got better and improved, and they want to see the site redeveloped in a thoughtful manner, and they liked what we were doing. So that's the ultimate, but to get there required multiple steps, and they have a process, as you know, and we followed it. So that was the biggest one there. The rest of it's in local control. So the first step was to see if, if the town wanted the, basically wanted this use, and they did, which was the Board of Appeals. The second big step was the DEP making sure that we could repurpose what was there and update and make it better. And then we have to obviously finalize it with the local boards, so that's really where we are. And we've used every bit of, you know, we have pushed as hard as we can without being obnoxious about it, to, to get this thing over the goal line, so we could move, because we want to get the buildings out of there and get the foundations in and get building.
Yeah, we've seen several iterations.
Right.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Would you like to ask them?
I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask the engineer, and then he'll, the lawyer will probably answer. No, the, we, we've seen a bunch of the numbers over the past year. We wrote you a letter about a year ago, and we weren't objecting to the, to the concept, it just seemed a bit too big. At the time, that was 84 units.
That's right.
Now it's 66 units, so you have to take, you have to take that into consideration, that seems, but we, they, you started out with a original design of 12,500, and now you're down to-
99.
Now you're down to 10,000, or 9,900, or whatever, is what I was extending out. That's, that's, that's the final, that's what you agreed with DEP.
Yes.
Do they, do they write anything down, like, like an executive summary or something like that, that we agreed with them that, on this, thus and so, and stuff like that?
Yeah, they, we have the water supply permit, which is a new source approval permit, that outlines the fact that it's 66 units and 9,900 gallons a day, and that we, that is our maximum, we can't go over that.
Okay, and that would be going to the Board of Health, and-
Yep, and we can, obviously, we will submit it to you, too.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, no, just as long as I know that there's-
No, it's a DEP decision.
That this is not, this is not something over the phone that we ask-
No, no, we actually-
I did, just to, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I did, I, we did start at 84 units, that's true. Yeah, and then, and then it became 74.
Yeah.
And then it became 60, so we've been adjusting down from the beginning.
Yeah.
Yes. And the reason 84 was the numbers, because that's what the existing sore flaw was.
Yeah.
So we figured that would be okay.
Gotcha.
But it wasn't, and, and so there was, and there was concerns that it might be a little bit too, like you said, sir, like maybe a few units too many, and, so, but I think a lot of your original questions or concerns in your letter, like you said, but I just want you to-
We're at 84, because of the lot coverage and everything else, right.
But that's all improved.
Yeah. We were involved with this before, when it was a nursing home.
Oh, I know.
And the first go-around with all the, with the scientists, it didn't work out so well, and it took help from politicians to, to push it through. And so you don't really know what, what the paperwork is behind that.
But today, it's a nice, clean approval.
But now it seems all scientists, right?
I know what the paperwork looks like.
Oh, you do?
But just so, just so the board members know, it's a nice, clean approval, it's up to date, it's 2019, we've dotted all the i's, we've crossed all the t's as far as DEP is concerned, and it's all documented, we'll share that with you, so you'll have that in your file for, you know, to review if, if you so choose to.
Well, DEP, I think, is basically Board of Health.
Right, but just so you know, that, you know, what the constraints were put on us, I'd like you to have it.
Yeah, I think we've got submitted paperwork plus, just to have on file.
Not bad. Now, all of the new ones-
The zoning board approval, the decision, required us to go to DEP and make adjustments as they required, so they'll be getting a copy, and you'll be getting a copy, that's why we went to them first, because we needed to get to them-
Well, yeah.
Figure out where we were as logical, and actually, part of their decision was, we need to come to you guys and comply with your local regs, and that's why you're the next stop, in conjunction with Board of Health. In conservation.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can I ask you? So it's good you have written approval from DEP, you had said it's 66 units, but they may be occupied by two occupants, so it could be as much as 130 occupants-
That's right.
-in the building.
But in 55 and older, it's 150 gallons per unit, but-
Yeah, I'm, I'm not worried about the gallons as much as the people and the cars, with my questions, is, do you have, like, a vehicle restriction, that one unit would have one vehicle, or do you have parking for more than-
No, we don't, but these units, but having built hundreds of these, just experience, I built the very first one ever permitted in 1992 in Metro West, and a lot of people have a lot of concerns and so on, and actually, it ends up being about one and a half cars per unit.
Yeah, and you have the space for that.
Right, and you have the space for that. So, but I, I just want you to know, when you look at all that, the trips and everything else, we, we looked at that, and when you look at, they had 70 cars distant staff cycling through there, all right? So that was, you know, granted, some of the people that lived up there, you know, weren't able to drive, obviously, but then there was guests visiting those people and, and all that.
I don't question that the traffic flow is lesser, but my concern is that now the age of the drivers that's going to be driving that are older, and we're all familiar with the site, with the downhill slope, and then that kind of causeway bend around, I guess I'd be a little bit concerned about elderly drivers going through the cranberry bog. And it's, and again, it's off your property, but I think it's a legitimate concern that who's responsible for that roadway off that park?
Ourselves and Deacon's, and we work together. But I, I just, up till it hits the main road, the Island Road, or whatever it's called, the, the thing I want you to be comfortable with, and, and, because I know the dynamics of these projects, like I said, I've built a lot of them, these, the majority of the people that live here, okay, are still working.
Yeah.
And, and they're very active people. You know, today's 60 is not, when we were kids, 60 was different. Today, a lot of people are working right through to 70 or beyond, they're very active, they're very, very vital, you know, very active people. That's who the buyers are for here, people who, you know-
Yeah, but they get older, once they're in there, they do get older.
Well, they do, but they don't necessarily stay there, as they, as they age, they could age out of it. And in Marlboro, we actually did three levels of, of housing. We did, we did the, the independent, like this, the 55, then we did one, the one where we added an assisted component, well, an assisted component with memory care, but then we also had one, which was in a, one major apartment with, with no assisted, but it has, and we just finished permitting this up there, and, but it's, it's apartments for older people, like 75-plus, with some services, but not medical assistance. So there's like three different levels. They don't stay here forever, but what they do, the people that come here are primarily the people where the kids are off to college, or off to whatever, they're empty nesters, or widows and widowers, and, but they're still, you know, they could be a consultant working a couple of days a week, or they could be going back and forth to Boston, they're still very active, they may spend a couple of months in Florida. So it's, it's, that's really the demographic, they just don't want the baggage of a house anymore, you know, and what goes with it. But I understand your point, and, and the way we do, we address that is, I think, with some improvements that we're making on the road for drainage and things like that, and we could look at site distances and things like that, and I'll work mostly with Deacon's.
And I guess my only, it's not my only concern, but one of my concerns would be if there was a problem with elderly drivers at night, with maybe some vision issues, that two or three people end up in the cranberry bog, and, you know, God forbid, it's no bad accident, but now we've got to put up a guardrail, we don't want to see a big silver guardrail line the bog, if it's just a visual barrier that, you know.
Exactly.
And again, that's, hopefully we'd come back or hear about it, but white picket or a white rail fence.
What I do guardrails, when I do guardrails in residential communities, I don't use galvanized, I use Corten, and, and, you familiar with that?
Yep.
So that, that is a much lesser impactful visually. But I think between Deacon's and myself, we can, you know, we can look at this, and I'm, I'm happy with having the ability to, you know, do it and then go back and look at it in the future, if it looks like it, then we could add, you know, enhancements, if there's, I don't think there's any need to do anything, but if one arose-
I don't either.
But if one arose, I'd want you to have the ability to step in.
Okay. I, I absolutely think there's something that has to be done, just, just in case, just to put a sharp point, that, right now, if you drive down there, especially on a night like tonight, it is absolutely dark. It's dark for the last three-quarters of a mile coming down there. This is, there isn't any way in the world-
You're saying a consideration for some light?
There isn't any way in the world that a planning board, that you can ask a planning board to, to allow a dike between two cranberry bogs to be considered a roadway. We don't have to do it. We have to declare that it's a good enough roadway, and we're not going to do it. So, but what you want to do, if you- So, but what you want to do, if you have a plan for fifty-five or, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at that plan there.
The island terrace.
See?
Yeah.
The dock lines?
Yes.
That's their property.
That's their property and they, but if this says island terrace, they're going to have to show the, I mean, if this says, the, the street that they, the last public street that Lakeville owns is going to have to be on a drawing that also has this site on it, that shows how you get from the last public street to here, unless you're applying for a landlocked, you know, for a landlocked thing. You don't, what?
We've had the right that we...
You don't yet.
No, we have the right to go to the Lakeville's main road. We do today.
Of course you do, you will.
And isn't that the main?
You will.
Isn't that the main road right there?
So what have they done there the last sixty years?
No, nowhere near. Nowhere near.
This is the end of the property. There's the cranberry bogs that...
This says fifty-seven, fifty-seven Long Point Road. I want to see Long Point Road.
It's not a problem.
Where is Long Point Road?
It's not a problem.
So, it isn't, it's not going to be a problem, but is there one place you show it as a fifteen foot?
I'd like to have registry deeds easement that's filed between the two properties that can be just provided.
There is a twenty-foot easement with a fifteen-foot access.
Right, you have every, you have every right to get to a public road and, but that's a common law right. That, that's every part, you have to be allowed to get there. But you still have to arrange exactly what the path is and you have to show us what it is. Because maybe a small adjustment in it would be acceptable to the planning board or maybe it wouldn't be. We can't deny you access to it. You have a common law right to that. But not fif, not fifteen feet, that tiny little road, there isn't any reason, these are good people, the Deaconess people, they're still all, fortunately, they're still all alive and they're all still active and stuff like that. And I'm sure you'll be able to work something out, but you'll have to work it out with your engineer and draw it and bring it, bring it to us and I'm sure we'll pass it. But it, it needs, it needs more width and it needs, and it needs some lights and it certainly needs a way of keeping them from driving into the bogs. We've, in the last two months, we've had two serious accidents there in the bogs. There was one where, you know, the taillight sticking out of the bog.
Well, I think if this property becomes fallow, I think you'll have a lot worse than that to deal with.
I'm sure we will, but in the meantime...
That's really, that's the real issue. I mean, the people...
Well, what we can do is we can still make you fix the road.
But in all fairness though...
Yeah.
It's been used really without incident, other than what you've just mentioned, for my entire lifetime as a nursing home. And, and I think that shows precedent of what's been able. Are we willing to make it better?
Yes, sure you are.
So, so could we just say for tonight's sake that we not get too far into the weeds about that and that when we see the next plan that you'll have?
You want to see the E access out there.
Yeah, there's, there's going to be some improvement made and it's going to be a formal improvement and it'll go right through the process. It's not going to be, well, we're working out with Deaconess leave. No, it's going to be part of this.
I agree. I agree.
This is just an informative meeting. I guess I have a couple more questions that are sort of more, just kind of high level. Did I miss the part we talked about? I know you're going to have two bedrooms in each unit. Approximately how many square feet is each unit?
About a thousand.
About a thousand square feet.
But all on one level.
Yeah. So I would imagine as a developer, if you're building a thousand square foot unit with elevators and underground parking, these are going to be some high-end units for a thousand dollars. So I guess that gives me a little bit more comfort level with the risks associated with the road, because it's a tremendous risk that you as a developer would take with that. I, I like that path. I like to walk on that path right back there. So I know the road that they're talking about and I, I just can't imagine where you would invest something like this and then leave that to wonder what's going to happen. I do, I do appreciate what you're saying.
I just want to work together, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely. So the handicap accessible?
I mean, I didn't design this originally, you know, working with...
Yeah, you're working with what you've got.
Whereas we're trying to make something work and tweak it, just like we tweaked it with DEP.
Yep.
You know, is essentially what we're talking about here.
It's great.
Well, everything else had to get fixed. There's no reason not to think the road's got to be fixed too.
And I thought your presentation was very good.
That wasn't DEP, not white.
Handicap accessible or any of the units handicap accessible?
They're all.
All of them. Okay, that's a really valuable point.
I can appreciate that because my mother was in a wheelchair and I dealt with it.
At our age, you just don't know, right? Security, so you probably won't have security services or concierge?
Yeah, so no, it's independent, so, yeah, no, you don't. But there is a property manager and, and there is a housekeeping on the common areas and landscaping maintenance and plowing and things of that nature and also somebody on call for emergencies.
Yeah.
And obviously the elevators need an inspection every month. There's things of that nature.
Water treatment operator, water supply operator.
There's a lot of touching it.
Right.
It's not just build it and that's the end of it, you know, it's, there's ongoing people there.
Okay.
So you'll come back with an architectural plan?
Yes.
And so we would like to see like projected rakes. We did like in the rendering, they had the, looks like a masonry veneer on the foundation or the lower level.
It's a very upscale.
We would like called out, I guess, the architectural details.
Could you go back to the, to the rendering one time while he's, while he's speaking through it?
This is the rendering from last January.
I mean, we're still tweaking it, but it's that caliber.
So I have one question. The word average height is kind of a strange way of putting that.
Elevation makes a change, huh?
Well, you didn't put average elevation.
Well, that's the way the building inspector interpreted it because it's based on, it's based on when you go around the building. Yep. When you go around the building, all the heights are a little different.
Because the grade changes around the building.
So that's how it's determined.
And we couldn't exceed forty-five.
Okay, so max height, forty-five feet would be, would be, would be the way it's going to be?
We could probably say that, yeah.
Okay.
I'm looking at the garage. So that's why it's average. So yeah, that's, it's average because that's what it's called for in the bylaw.
Yeah.
It's like the same, for instance, when you have a, a house, it's like...
That's already way higher.
Well, the mean elevation.
Height from the average elevation?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we have to take a look, this, this one here on the backside of it, on the backside of the nursing home right now, you drive right into it, it's a big driveway down to you. So that's going to be higher than it is in the front.
Are the garages going to be sprinkled?
Yes.
And the units themselves?
Yes.
Those two garage doors, how many ways into the garage? Two and two? Two entrances, two exits or just one and one?
I think it's one and one.
And I know you can't, I know we're getting a little ahead of ourselves, but if you could visualize that, what we're looking here compared to this building, are we looking at like an end? Because I, I'm probably looking at a four hundred foot long building.
We're looking at a different way.
Right.
Well, we originally had it, you entered this way. Now we've got it. So we've, we will have the new one that'll show, built now on here and then the building with the entrance.
Okay.
But this was off of the original ZVA here.
Yeah, this was conceptually.
I understand, yeah.
And just to give you comfort, my expertise as a builder and developer, I mean, I do very, very specialized of my own. I, I'm doing historic renovations and I'm very familiar with the rakes and all the different, you know, the eye, how it should appear, the periods of, you know, to make sure it looks appropriate. And I'm really fussy. I'm my own biggest critic, so I'm not looking to do anything on the cheap. I'm looking to do it really thoroughly and, and have it look because the clientele that we're soliciting for this is going to appreciate that. But I don't want to be involved, I don't do, you know, shake and bake houses. I, 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 everything I do is, we're doing a magnificent restoration right now on a, one of the most important houses in Massachusetts. It's a stone house and we turned it into a boutique hotel right on Main Street in South borough. And you'll see the detail on that and I saved that from the wrecking ball. So, you know, these are, I'm very familiar with it and I'm not going to have my name associated with anything that isn't. And I know that may not mean anything to you because you've probably been told that by other people and it's been a hollow promise. I'm telling you that, you know, my plans will reflect that in the end product, you'd be very proud to have us here. And, and, you know, that's, and I, you know, like I say, I've been doing this since nineteen seventy-nine. So it's a long time. I can't believe it. I used to be the youngest guy in the room, now I'm the oldest, but...
No, actually, he is.
One of us.
You go to a business meeting, they used to be all older, you know, and then, you know, all of a sudden I started looking around, everybody's forty, thirty-five, you know, forty-five. I'm sixty-three and I'm saying, oh my God, you know, what happened?
Did you have, the city of New Bedford had some concerns about that. Was the city of New Bedford's concerns resolved when the DEP clearance?
It had to do with the water. Because that's a water resource.
Oh, yeah. Were they satisfied now that the DEP?
Yeah, we're in the process of putting together a simulation of this missile. And they, what they wanted, after they looked at what DEP did to us...
They were quite happy.
They said, this, this is good, but we don't want people to have access to go down to the water.
Yep.
So they want us to post signs.
Well, they don't want swimming.
Yes.
You know, water skiing.
Yes.
And I did point out that they only had a license, so once we had DEP approval, they didn't even have standing. But we still wanted to work with them.
Yeah, we want to be good neighbors.
I built it to set of stairs on the backside.
That's what we were going to do.
It's a hell of a staircase, you know, because that's up there. That's a cliff, you know?
Yeah, it's...
But they were very happy with the, as Bill mentioned, they were very happy with the, with our progress from DEP. And as Bill mentioned, they don't have technically outstanding, but we're not interested in, you know, that whole conversation. I mean, that's a technical legal conversation. What I'd rather do is show them all the care that we took with the project and they were satisfied with it. We've been out to the project, we've met them on site. And I think, you know, verbally we're resolved. I mean, obviously there's technicalities with the paperwork, but, but that's, that's the lawyers and, you know, that's, you know, how that goes. That's what they do.
And that's still with Taunton also?
Ring the bell, as they say.
With Taunton also? Because people ask us. Everyone knows there was a lawsuit, but no one knows what it was.
They took a lot of time to look at, because after they came out and walked the site and Kevin gave them the whole history that was gone and what was there, we sent them all the paperwork, everything, so that their engineers could look at it to be satisfied as well. And, you know, they came back with, well, can we put some signs up? You know, so they're obviously okay with the way the water's turned.
Basically, DEP addressed every one of their concerns.
Yeah.
So when we solved DEP, we kind of alleviated any baggage that was out there from them.
So when do you think?
Just so you know, Taunton, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mark, but, Mr. Mark, but when the tolls built the water treatment and all that, both New Bedford and Taunton wrote letters of support for a project, now keep this in mind, for a development that was more intensive with medical waste and everything else being discharged there than what we're talking about. They wrote those letters, those are in my file. So it's, it's a little hollow for them to say, wait a minute, you're making all these improvements and we're against it? I mean, that's a little ridiculous.
No, that's not exactly the, the, the actual way it goes is that they, the people weren't, that wrote the letters, weren't impressed with the engineering or what, or the money that was going into it. They really, really liked the tolls. They were very popular here in town and it was a very popular, I mean, everyone feels badly about that, that operation no longer being there. That was the, that's where they got all the support.
For what it's worth, the tolls would be out in the street if it wasn't for me. All right? I, I hope you know that. I mean, I'm not looking for any accolades, but I, I just want you to know that I've tried to do every, my absolute best and I'm trying to give them a fresh start. And, and I've kept the bank off their back. So they've been living there, rent-free and, you know, so they can kind of, you know, regroup and start over. It's not a, a great situation, but it's a lot better than it would have been had I not been involved. I just want you folks to know that. And I'm not looking for any credit for that, but I just want you to know the facts, that's, that's... Is there anything further?
I just wanted to ask when we might see them come back with like plans and another visit to our board.
We hope they have, we, we hope they have the formal right away because we, we've already got the architects as a fly-in. The architectural team on this is a big architectural firm, out of Harvard, Mass. Mogul and Associates, who does a lot of real top-end product. And so we'll be able to give you, you know, good elevations and, and Kevin is cranking on the site plan.
Do you ask, do you meet after the other week or?
It's the second and fourth Thursdays of each month, unless there's a holiday. We do have holidays coming up. I think we only meet once in the next...
Our dates are posted on the website.
So... I have a technical question that I have to ask while you're here. The, you, when, when you were in the process with the ZVA, you gave them three thousand bucks for the peer review. They spent, they only spent thirteen hundred. We have a new, these are new, these are new, not plumbing, these are new sanitary drawings. So...
Well, not a hundred percent no, but yes.
No, of course not a hundred percent no, but, but, but we still have to send them back, we still have to send them back and we'd like to send them to the same period.
We don't send them. The Board of Health does. Sanitary? You're talking septic system?
These, the, the drawings that we were just submitting, these drawings show new stuff.
By septic.
This would go, this would go to Nick Lane.
Yeah. When we get...
By the Board of Health. And we will, you know, whatever that takes, I'm not going to put any burden on the town.
But did you say you were looking to start demolition? When did you say you were looking to start demolition?
Can we transfer that? Can we tran, do we have your permission to transfer the money, uh, from ZVA account to?
And, and I'll take it a step further because I will tell you that if there's any deficit there.
Yeah.
We'll make the town whole.
Oh.
We're not, we're, we're not looking to put any burden on the town. We're looking to, and, uh, we're looking to get the, the properties cleaned, demolished, thoughtfully, you know, removed in a safe manner and, um, and, and get going. So that's what we'd like to do.
No, we're just asking your permission. We, we, we can't use your money with.
Is this for the rainwater runoff or is this for the septic?
Whatever's on this drawing.
You said septic.
And, and septic is what was, what it looks like was changed. I only got these this morning.
Right, okay.
And I see septic changes.
The septic was changed.
So it has to go to Nick Lane.
These are actually storm water.
Septic was changed by the DEP.
That's septic.
We will. So, so are we sending them septic to have him review what the DEP just approved?
This, this isn't approved. We don't know this is approved by anyone. This is, this is, this is a draft. This is nothing.
We did approve the water supplies and the water treatment system.
Okay.
We have to.
Wastewater?
The wastewater is, the existing treatment system has already been approved. The Board of Health will be approving the new leachant.
Okay, will the Board, now with the Board of Health, they send that to Nick Lane. So if the Board of Health sends a septic system to Nick Lane and we send a septic system to Nick Lane.
Redundancy?
Don't you think?
The person who's going to be sending is going to be Kathy and she heard that's six feet away from.
Do you send for the Board of Health? She doesn't send for the Board of Health.
Of course she would, but, but the fellow that would is sitting right there. I mean, they, they can work it out.
Yeah, we've got to get the full design plan.
I'm just saying, we don't send for the Board of Health. We never have and I don't really plan on doing it anymore, so.
Yeah, I would think you would want Nick to review the storm water, um, and we'll have a storm water report and storm water design. Uh, we've shown it here, but it hasn't, we haven't presented a full design to you.
Yeah, so in closing, we'd like to see those peer reviews. Do you have a question, Mr. Mark?
Could I just ask a few questions?
Sure, Tom, please.
I'm not an engineer, I'm not a builder. I can answer any question he has above his knees. He gave me the plans, I still can't see them. I just have some, and the first question, you gotta laugh at, but I'm dead serious. Did anyone raise any concerns to National Heritage Foundation about turtles on the property?
No.
How the hell did you get away with that?
Can't get us any help, doesn't mean.
Boxed turtles, okay. Next question I have, is the current nursing home, this is the layout of the current nursing home?
That's it, that's existing.
The, the existing nursing home, so that faces quidicus. And both of these buildings right here are going to face clock share?
Yeah, this is basically is in the footprint of the original home for the most part. This one is new. That's where the single-family homes are now.
Yeah, there's, there's one home that's down here and the other two homes are located up there. I'm kind of familiar with the property, but I was just curious, the setback, is the setback at least a hundred feet?
Yes.
Okay, some questions?
Setback for the buildings are greater than a hundred feet. The, some of the storm water for the recharge is less than a hundred feet. That's a ninety foot.
That's sub, subservient.
Okay. And my next question is if they're going to be forty-five feet high, like when you're standing on Long Point Road and you're looking at the property, so the ones at the top of the hill, they're going to look like McMansions if they're forty feet high, right? Because if they're placed on the top of the hill.
Well, they're going to look like they belong there because they're going to look, it'll be very, very, very similar to what I call down east.
Okay.
When, when that building was originally built.
Yeah.
It was probably natural shingles. I think over the years they painted it and everything else, you know? But that, it's called shingle style and that's what you would, you would have there. It's very.
The existing old mansion is two and a half stories or thereabouts.
There's really no difference in the massing, um, you know, to, so to speak, but, you know, it, the project is actually getting tighter and, and less of a, smaller footprints when you look at the overall disturbance of the site. But, you know, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that when you drive up the road, you're not going to see something, of course you're going to see something.
Okay, I'm just, and again, sir, I'm, I'm.
But you're only looking at twenty percent development up there, twenty percent with any type of disturbance. Everything else is eighty percent left in its natural state or put back to its natural state.
And the, the coverage now?
It's by twenty, mid-twenty.
Now it is?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you go into twenty, actually nineteen and change.
Yeah, we're reducing, uh, impervious, reducing parking, um, big part of the impervious is that now there's the building, but the big part is the parking.
Right. To me, the single biggest thing, there's two big things. One is obviously we see the state of affairs up there right now. Having a solution that we all agree on is huge, you know, that something happens so it doesn't end up like the hospital or something else. And the second thing is, is the waste that those, that was being done up there with medical waste and syringes and everything else and people's blood and everything else going into there and all the, all these other things, that was a lot more impactful on the septic system and the treatment than what we're talking about. We're talking about just standard generic waste. So I think those are two huge pluses, separate from everything else, you know, you're, you're, you're solving a problem, uh, uh, it could be a huge problem and you're getting rid of , uh, waste that, you know, that was much more, and, and you're shrinking this thing down, so it's all going the right direction for conservation and open space and, and, and environmental concerns, you know? I mean, I just want you to know that, but I'm not.
I'm glad they can't dump the medical waste down.
But I don't know, but who knows what happened, but.
I know about that.
But I'm sure you do. But what I'm explaining to you is, is that, is that, um, you know, it's, when you look at the whole thing, the idea is to get it all smaller and, and, you know, condensed, but there, but I'm not going to sit here and say to you, uh, every project has impacts, so there's always an impact when you build anything. And I'm just trying to make the impacts meaningful, so the end result is a much less impactful, but there's, there is impacts, you know?
What other question about the trees? There's a lot of trees up there.
There's very little cutting, minimal.
So you're not going to cut down?
There is some cutting back.
Minimal, minimal though.
Is it, is it cutting for the view to face the park?
Uh, no cutting, we're, we're, there's some trees right here.
Yep.
Uh, that's really the spot, is right in here that there's some trees.
Right.
But there's no, we're not cutting down, um.
The buffer between.
The buffer, no.
No.
No, there's enough to construct it and to put in the, uh, the, um, recharge, but it's not cut the trees and we can't touch anything from first fifty feet anyhow, uh, but that's not going to be cleared for.
Plus the land is all stable, you know, you've got the root systems of those trees holding the whole thing together like, you know, like a net. You don't want to get into that.
That was an easy question.
Is there anything further from the board?
Just wondering if you guys talk to conservation?
Yes.
And they liked it and what did they?